...to order. And if you will join me in a moment of silent prayer or reflection, please. Thank you. And Terry, if one of you will call?
Pat Rooney?
Here.
Alan Ward?
Here.
John Mastin?
Here.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Nicole Cullen?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to review and accept the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. Terry?
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cullen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Osire. I'm gonna try these on just to practice my work session today.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. As we go through the agenda for today, or the next week, rather, we have the beginning of the agenda with our consent calendar and the minutes of the regular working from March 14th. The special session, March 31st for the E-rate proposal. And then the work session, which was March 7th. The next item is the normal approval of or modification of the agenda. Item three under consent is the personnel report. There are no exceptions to policy here. Next item is item six, which is the changes of policy exhibits, GCFED and GCFEE, which are regarding professional staff hiring. These policies are technical changes in the I-9 requirements, which are for employees who come from out of country. And also has had a couple of technical modifications in terms of wording for other last names and also the sign-off requirements for both the employee and the employers if we do hire any employees on the I-9. Those technical changes are in this policy. The next item is number seven, is the emergency procurement permission. We did have a water line break, which you're aware of, at O'Grady on March 10th. We did have to call in a bender. We used Skyline Plumbing locally to come in and repair that water line. And so we did have to do that prior to it just sort of being issued.
I understand the school facilities board is gonna cover that.
And then what about the payment? Are we paying for that or is that SFP as well?
It's all part of that whole contract awarded to Skyline. Skyline took care of the repair and then sent it out to the payment company.
Okay.
Going into the action items. Five point one is the second reading of the graduation policy. And what this does is notify the students that are planning to graduate early. They need to notify prior to the first day of the semester, preceding the semester of graduation. So basically it's a year's notice. So if they want to graduate halfway through their senior year, they notify halfway through their junior year. And that way it allows for the planning to allow that to happen. Item six point one is the Thunderbolt Middle School Handbook, which board members received a copy of electronically. On the cover page of that version is a list of the changes that were actually made in the handbook. Looking to see, we don't have any of our principals here to answer questions this evening.
No, but I'm gonna ask Mike to throw his recently old principal hat on. And can you tell me what the process is for the handbooks? Can you tell me, do hard copies go out to all the parents? When does it go out? What does that look like?
That's been kind of evolving over the last couple of years. We've tried to move more towards a paperless approach so that that way we're cutting down on expenses of mass copying large handbooks. However, there's a form that they fill out stating where they can find the resource and that they've read it and reviewed it with their student as well. And they would turn that in. If they're unable to access it electronically, then we would provide a hard copy in the school office for them to keep.
And when you say electronically, would this whole packet be in one PDF that you can search and scroll and?
Correct. It would be on the website.
Okay.
Oh yeah. I mentioned this to Diana earlier, and I'll mention it here just so everybody can... I've just never seen an elementary school handbook that was as big as an encyclopedia before. This is my first time. I mean, I don't see why we shouldn't consider in the future having a handbook for the district and having individual handbooks for the elementary schools that highlight those areas that apply to that elementary school as a handout to the parents. We could have the one online, but the parents would then get something that's five-page,
We're used to have that. Six-page.
And at least they'll look at it and they'll read it. They're not gonna look at this. Unless they've got a complaint, they're not gonna go online and look at this. And then you're gonna have conflicts because you're gonna say, "Parents, you were supposed to do this." And the parent's gonna say, "Well, I didn't know it was in there." You see where I'm coming from? Just something to think about in the future. Because I looked at this and I couldn't believe how big this was for an elementary school handbook. It was just incredible.
Well, I think some of the problem must have come about when I think the principals, elementary principals, were directed to combine all of them into one handbook. And you can just imagine what that effort must have been like for each of them with their own rules and consequences and whatever. And I see this as a product of that consolidation. It's very unpleasant to read. It's tedious, everything we've said, both of you, tonight. But, you know, we'd have to make a decision. Do we want all of the elementary schools to have the same rules, the same consequences with some little leeway?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We need to consider it. This is fine. We've got this designed for this year. We need to consider what we're really doing here. For instance, I've never seen a handbook for any school that didn't at least have an evacuation plan in it or an active shooter plan in it or something.
Well, you don't put those in your handbooks and make them available to the public.
Well, I'm just saying, we have them in ours for that.
They changed the law on that several years ago.
That way you let the shooter know what...
But there are a lot of things like this. There are a lot of things like that that would be different for Starline, for instance, than it would be for O'Grady. And you would expect that to be in Starline's handbook, but not in O'Grady's handbook. If I'm making logical sense here.
I... Oh, go ahead, Pat.
I think one of the problems, as I recall, was that it was the desire to come up with some type of uniformity so that all of a sudden, when one school dealt with something a certain way, they weren't citing other schools that didn't have that policy. And so it was an idea to come up with uniformity. Now, I agree with you. I think you could put so much into a handbook that it doesn't really, they're not gonna read it. They're not gonna do stuff like that. And I do find something like this a little cumbersome, but, you know, and it ought to be sort of simplified, that the kids in all the schools do things a certain way. But I can remember when that would come up. And of course, it would end up at the school board. And the issue was always brought up, well, this school has this rule and this school doesn't have this rule. And I think one of the things that brought it up was hair coloring at the time. And that one school didn't allow it. And then they said, "Well, you know, other schools don't have that in." And so that's what, you know, when I went to high school, you know what was in the handbook? It was the school fight song and all that type of stuff. And you didn't have all these, but as things have progressed, if you don't cross the Ts and dot the Is, it's a big issue. And I do believe that a handbook, the nice thing, I think, in high school, I've been there for quite a while, but the kid got a handbook. I don't think it was that extensive. It was relatively straightforward. You know, they're in high school. By that time, we're hoping they've mastered reading. And so they had to sign for it. And the parents had to acknowledge also that their kid had gotten the thing. And in that way, when the discussion came up later, you didn't have, "Well, I didn't know. Here's your signature." But I do, when I look at something like this, it is rather promising.
And I think we could put a lot of this into an online district handbook. And then let's just take the handbook for Starline under, pick a subject, transportation. You could say, "Refer to district handbook URL such and such basis." Buy online. And you would refer to that. It's a district policy. But it's something for us to think about.
Well, just quickly, I'm looking at bicycle safety. Keep your bike in working order. Me, that isn't a school problem. That's a kid's problem and a person's. Never ride double. Ride in the same direction as traffic on the right side of the street. I know what I'm saying?
That stuff doesn't happen.
I do.
Let's start with that doesn't happen in the real world. But number two is, you're exactly correct. That's a parent-to-student issue.
Well, but the keep your bike in working order, that doesn't affect the school because I've been out at the bike rack. And if you have a kid's bike, it doesn't work. So everything stops and you have to call the custodian to go get his toolbox and come over here. It's just, it's a responsibility of the parent to do it. And we need them to know that it's a responsibility.
Johnny, we love you. Push your broken bike home.
You put that in there.
I want to point out that on page 11 of the elementary school handbook, what bothered me the most under technology policies is one sentence. And I've got the whole book marked up. But this one sentence says, "We expect your student to follow federal, state, and local laws and district policies regarding acceptable use of computers and IT regardless of the source." That sentence alone probably represents, my estimate, tell me what you think, about 10,000 pages worth of laws and regulations. So when I'm looking at this handbook, what I'm seeing is a CYA to say, "We've given you everything. It's your responsible to read it, understand it, everything." There are a zillion rabbit holes to go down in this book. And I think that's part of why parents disengage sometimes. The expectation is not clear about what it is. It's so...
Then this would have to be a lot larger.
Well, but it's a double-edged sword. On one hand, you have a parent who sits there and says, "You didn't put it in writing." On the other hand, when you put it in writing, you have to disclaim every last little nuance of it. You wind up with something, you know, just the elementary handbook. I mean, it's voluminous when you stop and look at it. It doesn't mean there's not good information in there.
Right.
But I honestly think that we need to get to what the school's responsibilities are in here, what we expect of the student. And I think that there is a place in here where we can get to a common handbook for all grade levels.
Well...
And then issue an elementary addendum, a middle school addendum, and a high school addendum.
Or an individual school addendum.
However it works out.
For variance.
However it works out. And then once you get to that point, the base one can be very voluminous. It can be very detailed. It can be very explanatory. And it can be offline loan.
But it doesn't need to be wording. You can cite everything that everybody needs to know
Sure.
without the paragraphs that go on and on.
But if we felt that that was a necessity, if we have a base book that goes online, we could have, like Ellen said, we could have a referral point and say, "By the way, if you want more information on where we're at with technology, or where we're at with transportation, or where we're at with the length of shorts," or whatever that point in the book is, "Go online. Here's the actual in-depth part of this. When you have a problem, you want more information on it. But here's the basics for this school."
And I think you've got some good ideas. Break it apart into maybe different books or something on the website. But I think before we get started on this road that we need to think of every possible reason there is to have a handbook. And I will tell you, Nicole, one of them is CYA. Because if it's not covered, then some attorney is going to...
Well, what we're saying is you would still have it.
I understand.
You would simply have it split. And something I want to remind everybody here, and I don't want to start a fight. When I first started learning for school board, communication was a big issue. Everybody was talking about it. You get a problem and you start putting everything online. You begin to assume that everybody's getting the word. I assume you got it because it's online. That's not communication. That's not saying to it they're getting what they need. And we need to be careful about that here.
Well, there's another reason for handbooks. And parents need to know things they never even realized that they had a stake in or that they could make use of. For example, in the Thunderbolt Middle School, there's a section on homeless children. Many parents or many foster parents are not, don't even know that foster children or children are family living in someone else's home, another family's home, that they can be considered to be homeless children. I think one of the things a handbook should be is information that some parents can use. It educates them. And so I made a list of things in this handbook that don't appear in the elementary handbook. And it was rather extensive, actually.
They're in lives. You know? And I just, I look at this and I think it's pretty easy to attack moving forward. But I think we've got a set of handbooks. Bike it, monk it. We're going into another school year at this point.
But that was kind of why I asked the question of what's the process? And if we're printing them? Because if we're not printing them, we have a little time. They don't have to be on the agenda for next week since there's no principals here now. That was my thought process of asking that question.
And just to clarify where my rating's going on is, I'd like to see the base core online, but I'd like to see something sent home to a parent too. I think that in communication, you could put it online. You could point to a website. But if you've got four or five pages of basic core things that are not in the base-level text document that you send home to a parent, now you've put something in front of them and you can't get that acknowledgement back still. You're not breaking the bank on the print itself.
I agree.
What could you do? I was gonna say, I think this is actually the very first year. We did not print them. I want to say we printed them every other year at the elementary. And at the middle school, when we had agendas, they were in the agenda. The kids carried them every day with them. I don't know about the high school. I don't know, was it in their agendas and their planners? Right. So, I mean, so they have them on them personally. And then my kids at the elementary level, we would read the important pieces. We would read everything the first week, but we would pull out the important pieces and go through the handbook with the kids.
And not so much for the student because I think that the student is gonna figure it out pretty quick what the rules are. It's more, sending something home in this case is more for the parent having that prior written notice of, gosh, your kid could get in trouble for their cellphone. Some of the times...
Well, they do. They have a form and it's required to come back. That I have read the handbook.
Right. But if you're not sending a handbook home, I don't think that prior written notice aspect of this is happening. And that may get us in more legal trouble than not having a handbook at all.
By the way, I don't recall that agendas were mentioned in either one of these handbooks.
I didn't read either.
I didn't see anything about the agendas. One that, I'm sorry, Mary Jo's not here, but one of the, I just really did like this handbook. And I really liked this page that had quick contact information on the other side here. I was, she may have a reason for not listing the nurses' phone number or email, which is fine. But I thought if she were going to, it would be a good place to put it. I'd like to see the same kind of contact information
Principals, ma'am.
Elementary handbook. And one of the things I didn't understand in the Thunderbolt one, it says that for hazing, hazing and bullying are both very serious. They're both class-one actions on the part of the student. For hazing, it said, which doesn't happen that much in middle school. Hazing, not to the extent it used to happen at the high school. But hazing must be taken care of by an administrator. It's very direct that bullying has to go to the counselor. I just don't agree with that. I think bullying has got to be taken care of by an administrator. Here she comes. Oh, dear.
I think we've beaten this horse to death. And all of us, pretty much, have been talking about the same line. But she just brought up a good point. If we had a little five-page thing for each school to go home to those parents, they would have their contact numbers on there. They would have the things that they need for that school.
Mary Jo, we're having discussions about the handbooks, elementary and middle school. And we could have the conversation again because that's what we've been talking about.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry. I'm glad you came. But there's a lot of questions. And so my question was originally what the process was. Do these go home? Is there a deadline, kind of that we need to get these out by or approved by? I think it would be wise for them printed.
I'll get printed. We do ours, we have them available printed. We have them on, we do mostly electronic. And then the parents sign a paper saying that they... We do it, whether they do or not. Do the children get one? Do the students get one? Not anymore.
So I'm wondering if it wouldn't be best to, if there's a problem pulling it from the agenda, letting everybody send their concerns maybe to... What are your thoughts on it?
I don't have a problem with that. I think that right now, the way that we do it, and I do want to clarify it, is when you go to the elementary, you know, you go to our website and click on schools, the elementary has the elementary handbook. And all, six of the elementary principals got together and reviewed it and went through the changes that you see here. And so these were, again, I think, maybe Kathy or Mr. Rooney talked about the idea that we all have the same rules because of the issues going back and forth. So these were the areas that they, you know, they really didn't go through and edit it historically. So, you know, they're just looking at, how do we fix what we have? It wasn't really a look at the whole handbook and does it need revising? And so that would be unexpected for them to say, here it is, revise it. At this point, just to be aware of that. So if we're willing to ask for that process to happen, we do need to give them some time to do that. The contact information and so forth is specific on the middle school and high school because it's only one handbook and only in one school. I know that for each of the elementary principals, they each have a different way of sending out information. But almost all of them have a welcome letter that gives all of that contact information and that sort of thing to parents that goes out. So it's not like parents don't get information. It just doesn't come in the form of a distributed handbook.
I, as a parent, because I have four kids in school and I have, I've had kids at the elementary, the middle school, and at the high school now. It's voluminous. It's daunting. The first week of school is not, "How was your day? Did you got your homework done?" It's, "What do you got for me to sign? And let me see what you've got now." Between syllabuses for high school and, "Have you looked at this? Have you looked at that? Here's our pre-permission forms and all of this stuff." I'm signing three or four pages a night during the first week. And a very handy thing for me as a parent would be to distill some of this down into a single form or a single source where I can just have it, you know, on one sheet I can pull off the front of a handbook and put a magnet on it on the fridge and there's my numbers. I need something to make it easy for me in my day-in, day-out life. And I'm, I, that's why I'm kind of pro to the idea of having something that's four or five pages long. Here it is, nice, concise, distilled. Here are the changes or the highlights or the things we're gonna really watch this year. And off we go. I'm really much more of a fan of that because it makes it easy in the midst of signing everything.
I will say, from the teacher's point of view, when I was in the classroom, it was burdensome for us as well that first week of school. I got a lot to do the first week of school. I literally had a chart and Excel spreadsheet with nine different forms that I had to collect in the first week. Johnny, where's Form A, Form II? I'm missing this one. I'm missing this one. You didn't have, Mom, I have to highlight. Mom forgot to sign the bottom of this one. Send it home. It's just really time-consuming, hours and hours, just collecting forms. So anything you can do to consolidate those, that would be wonderful.
And I have to say that the Thunderbolt was much easier on the eyes to read than the elementary.
I was trying to figure out why.
It's very difficult, a difficult read.
It's the formatting.
It's the formatting. It's the font size. It's, you know, the headers don't stand out. It doesn't really separate. So I think there's a lot of reasons to maybe...
Can I ask a clarifying question? So I'm not, I'm trying to decide what you guys are, if there was concerns from the Thunderbolt. The one thing, John, I don't know if this is what you're talking about with the handbooks being so big and everything. Is that what you're referring to?
Correct.
The thing that I'll tell you is, anything we leave out has the potential that's gonna come right back when the parent says, "It doesn't say that in your handbook."
And we had that this year?
Well...
We had that this year.
I could literally take either one of these handbooks and I bet you I could condense that without losing any of the reference, any of the law, statute, whatever, and condense it at least in half. Just by taking out the verbiage and having a one-liner and then saying, "See Arizona revised statute," with a link for, you know, more detailed information.
Here's what I would say, and I'll always speak for Thunderbolt. The simpler the better.
Right.
Because everything that you all probably have been saying just is more work for everybody.
Sure.
But that's also partly why we, when we gave out hard copies to 900 kids, we found 900 handbooks, or maybe, let's say, 700, in the trash, on the, they don't make it home, you know? So we always have it available. And it's always been right online. So you can, parents can refer to that all the time.
Well, and I think our point here was to produce an online version of a handbook, whether it's a consolidated district-wide Level 1 or one for elementary, middle, and high school. And to have that piece that went home to the parent so that there was still that, "By the way, here's what the changes are. Here's what's new this year. Here's what we're gonna be harping on, however you want to do that." Or, "Here's your stack of syllabuses. And PS, the handbook, the main handbook is over here on the website." And I think, I think when we don't do that, we get away from that prior written notification point of it where it's, you should be going on the website. You should be taking initiative. You should, you should, you should. As opposed to, "Here you go. Here's something that you can read, that you can look at. It's concise. It's small. It's easy to understand. And if you don't want to go look at the rest, we understand that. But we're just gonna give you this much of a prior written notice."
So you would like the Reader's Digest version to go home, physically home, and then referred back to?
Because you always have those things. We can get very nuanced when we get into discipline and policy. But you always have those things that you know we're gonna harp on. You know, it is punctuality. Tardies at Thunderbolt are a huge issue. I can remember stuff coming in, coming into my email going, "Our tardies are up. Please remind your student." You know? If there's a consequence for the tardy and that's something that you're gonna really watch like a hawk, that might be something to warn the parent on at the first of the school year so they're instilling a...
I hope that's not just Thunderbolt that cares about tardiness.
But you know what I'm saying. You know what I'm saying is...
I have some ideas about how to...
I think especially with the grade schools. Each school's unique. And there would be little things, little insignificant things like, "Parents, be aware, you cannot come in through the south door during school hours." Well, for this school, that's right. For that school, it's not right. So that's why that little handbook would be beneficial to focus on that particular elementary school.
We are going to have to get, next week we'll vote on the new policy for surveys. And that is going to need to be included somehow or other in this. I feel that's informational for parents. Lots of parents have issues with public schools and privacy, their students' privacy rights. and privacy, their students' privacy rights. And I think we need to have that stated in somewhere in handbooks where the parents are reading them or not, that they do have privacy rights, and their children don't have to take any surveys and that kind of thing, that needs to be included in both. Mary Jo, I have a couple of questions for you about your handbook, which I really liked a lot, and I particularly liked this page with quick contact information. Is there a reason you don't include the nurse, contact information for the nurse? Okay. I noticed that both hazing and bullying are Class I violations, very serious, but for hazing, students must see an administrator, for bullying, they are to see a counselor. I, they're both Class I, they're both very serious, as you know, the school district is working on bullying, we were targeting that. And I'm wondering, do they only see a counselor, or do they end up seeing an administrator and it's recorded in the discipline and a computer?
Yeah, it would start, typically it starts at the middle school with the counselor. They do, depending on how, I mean, if it's something that's very black and white and they can start with us, usually bullying is not that black and white, so it would start with the counselor doing the, then we have the required form that has to be filled out and recorded, and that's done in the counseling office. And then they bring the findings, if there's something that gets founded, then they bring that to an administrator for further investigation if needed.
Well, this, now let me tell you how I look at it. When I was in the high school, I made a blanket policy, my policy, that any reported bullying, you know, a lot of times kids will report bullying to a teacher or to a classified employee, you don't know who they're going to report it to. And I said, you must, if that happens, I said this to the staff, you must report it to an administrator, and an administrator will follow up on it. And I said, if you don't do this, you will be written up for it. Because I didn't want any of these to be lost, and I didn't, I always wanted parents to know we followed through every single time. And there's, it's not tight enough when it's left up to, well, okay, I know you won't, I know you're not that kind of kid, I know you won't do it again, teacher, classified person, they do that, they like the kids, you know, and it's that kind of relationship. But I took it to that seriously, it had to go to an administrator, and administrator had to investigate it and then make a determination. I think bringing the counselor in is a great idea. But I would ask you maybe to consider something administrative, even if the counselor says the administrator doesn't have to see a child, that somehow that there's a notation made in the student's discipline record. I mean, you know, you think it through. I'm just telling you, I don't want any accusation of bullying to ever get dropped.
Right. So can you clarify, where are you on the page 27?
If I may, one of the areas that we want to spend some time on, I think as a district, is looking at our discipline policies overall. And so that might be a more appropriate time to have a discussion on these kinds of items. I would suggest that we come back, maybe hold the handbooks from the future for the next board meeting table that, or postpone.
Not postpone.
One of the things that I think would be an easy thing to do would be to just have like the topics that are available in the handbook, have a sentence about them, and refer them then to the website handbook. We should then pull together a much smaller document to send home. That would give us at least a way to clean up some of this in the meantime. And I think we could probably work together in the principal team to do that.
I just wanted to make note that we might want to check with Scott because Jostens actually publishes the high school handbooks, and they do have a deadline. They do that for free for the high school every year, so they're the ones that are just a little bit different because everyone else prints their own.
Well, we haven't gotten that one yet, so...
Oh, that'll be next one. It's 32 and 33, the two policies. And then I have another question. When you post this handbook on your website, do you include this, the map at the back? Is that part of it?
Yes, would just be this, this whole thing is on there.
I see where you're going with that. We might not want to do that, but I think this, if we're going to post, if we're going to postpone it, then I think we could probably move on to the next action item.
We also, I thought about the map also when I saw that that was there. The same reason we don't do evacuation rights and so on, it's too easy to...
Right.
Okay. So we have the elementary and the middle school handbook.
So then nothing you need from that right now? And everybody can go up against the rest, admitting would be very boring. The TV on this floor.
Oh, come on now.
Oh, we are, goodie, all right.
One last thing on the handbooks. I saw the dress code, and I wanted to make mention of this two years in a row at the Nova graduation. I want to see something about, that's specific about the length of shorts. I don't know what that looks like, if it's the fingertip rule or what it is, but I was mortified at the graduation, and I don't understand why this is not an issue, especially for those young kids. I mean, I don't want to see anybody's cheekies, so I don't...
That is put in...
But it's not specific, it's very, it's subjective depending on where you are. If you've got some sort of fingertip rule, there, it isn't subjective, and it's easy to identify it. It doesn't have to be somebody going to a nurse and them measuring or whatever the, I don't know what the process is, but, and I like your modesty is key, it's true, but again, that's subjective. Your modesty is different from mine.
It is, and mine is very different from a parent dropping their child off in my parking lot. So I think that's a really deep conversation for the discipline committee, because I've tried everything that you're going to recommend, I've tried it, and the challenge is, what do we do about it? What do we do about it? And then I'm going to call, you know, parent and say, hey, your child's shorts are too short. No, 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 I sent them that way. And don't tell me how to dress my child. Those are the things that are the challenging part. I say we get standardized shorts.
All right.
This is Scott's comment.
Drop the mic.
Anyway, so I, look, I would love to...
Okay. Just had to throw it out there before I forgot.
That's when I come and supply you with all the dirty sweatpants you need.
Such a problem solver you are.
I love standardized short bottoms, I think we need to go there. That's just me. Okay, item 6.3 and item 6.4 are both contracts for Soliant. One is for speech services and one is for occupational services. They are both very similar, these are two areas that we have problems filling, and so these two contracts are the next two items.
Oh, boy, yeah. I've seen quite a few of these come through as I've sat through board meetings, both on that side and on this side. Are these for a single employee, for multiple employees per contract?
These contracts are for one employee, one speech therapist, one occupational therapist.
And I guess where my concern starts to, starts to come in is when I look at a speech therapist, and I look at about $74,000, $75,000 in median income, are we just not able to do that, that we then have to go out and spend $100-plus thousand on a, on a speech therapist? We can't get to that $70,000 mark? Wouldn't it be more beneficial at that point to be hiring directly the employee as opposed to going out for a, for an employee like this? Is our salary level that low?
Well, I can address the reality is, yes, our salary level is that low. It's one of the critical areas for the last decade, we've been talking about it. However, I can tell you, we actually have done creative things and gone beyond our salary schedule and still have not been able to fill those positions, even offering them a salary that's more consistent with the market. It is a challenge, and I think looking at some of that creativity, we've seen this with the medical, that's a challenge we have, we're competing with the medical model, and a lot more of the younger professionals are...
Aware it's a business.
They're aware of that reality, it's a business, and looking at that, but they also like to consider their options, and some of them are wanting to be more of a freelance and go and experience different places and go, so that they're able to look at that. So they're really hitting them at the colleges, recruiting them, and that is really a marketable thing that they are attracted to. We have a hard time, and I do know our hospital here is recruiting outside of the country, nursing and things like that, even to fill the positions we have here. So it's a very big challenge that we have.
So, and I'm going to be the numbers guy on this. So we cannot recruit, pay benefits on, and retain an employee for a calendar year as a, as a speech therapist for $108,000 a year. We have to go to a contract.
Well, I'll be honest with you, when I go out to recruit, I don't even see these types of folk, and they don't even come to my table and ask me what I'm paying. They're just not there. They're not going into the school system and wanting to work.
How many do we have in the district? I mean, or should we have? I mean, I know we, I saw the update in the VAD, 636 sped 10 AZ Eds. I don't know what percentage of those kids require these services.
Currently, we have four speech therapists that are working within the district. One of them is contracted, the other three are employed by the district. We did actually recruit outside of the country this year to fill one of those positions, so we are looking to do that. And that's been very successful to date, and we've been very pleased with that. The occupational therapy, we have two positions we'll find that we have built. Reality is, we could use a third, but getting even those two is hard to do. We have been utilizing services with some of our local mile markers has provided hard time support this year and working through it. Again, we've been very creative on that reality and using different modalities. In fact, we had to go to a talent therapy, we could not even contract the owner in person. We did have someone recently move into our community that is going to be contracting this big offer, so we're very solid in having that person available in our community. Last year, we hired someone and he didn't show up, you know, it was very, very pill. We do know that, you know, as we look at the salary restructure and look at those positions and try to do that, and that's something that Mrs. Minor is definitely committed to doing, you know, this is the team, we do know we have lots of positions that are very unique, our specialty areas that are crossing over to the medical, and we have to compete with that medical model. You know, those are the same people, and we have to be able to offer a salary. We have an environment where opportunities for them are different, so trying to find them, wanting to come into the education world versus the medical world, and finding someone who's looking for that lifestyle that, you know, the education world has, you know, so we have to mark it that way. But there aren't a lot of applicants, you know, our school psychologist positions, we have operated with two instead of four, and that's been very challenging. We're trying to contract for that position, and then not a lot of people responding to that. We haven't been able to do that, so.
Well, and I've been in touch with the HR folk at Bullhead and Kingman, Colorado River, they're in the same boat we are. They're, they're looking for psychologists and OTPT, they're in the same boat.
Even more highly populated and desirable areas are having difficulties.
Is, is our sped population spread out pretty evenly amongst all of our schools?
We have district programs that are located at Starline and Smoke Tree, so because of that, those populations are much more heavily populated because we have the preschool program that's just located at Smoke Tree. We have our self-contained student development center at Smoke Tree, and then we have a self-contained program at Starline that focuses with the primary category of autism. So those schools, because of that, have a larger population. The middle school and high school just have one middle, one high, so the students that come through there, we're pretty, when you look at numbers at each site, they're pretty comparative.
With specific learning disabilities, so the students who don't need self-contained are really well distributed.
And we do try to, again, that least restricted environment, the category or the eligibility doesn't define their program, it's really where the students function, where they can be successful.
Wait, I'm sorry. Say that again.
When we, in special ed, we talk about least restricted environment. You know, when we talk about an eligibility or a category, the needs drive the services. Just because a child may have a modern intellectual disability doesn't necessarily define that they're going to be in a self-contained program, that they're able to be successful in mainstream classes, resource, with some support, that's what we're going to do. So it's a continuum, so, but we do have some students who can't tolerate being out in the mainstream, they have sensory needs, or it's just not a good opportunity for them to be successful, they're just not functioning at that level, but they're benefiting, or their behaviors may be so disruptive when they're in that mainstream that it's just not appropriate, which is called a least restricted environment.
Are we going to take a serious look at this moving forward, trying to get our own in-house people? I, I just see, when I start looking at median pay, I think that there may be some opportunities there that we're just either not finding or we're not, we're not, in our salary structure, we're not constructed to go after those, and I think it might pay us a little bit of a dividend over the long run to try to get those...
And that is, you know, we're going to conduct a salary study in the fall, and this is one of the, all of these categories are included in that to see how we compare because that is an area we know.
And I think, I think if we can do it, we don't have to spend the $108, if it's, if it's 90 all-in, we might be in a better position. Even if it's $100, we're still $8,000 ahead of us to contract.
Now, we prefer to hire because we do have more stability, you know, we don't have the higher turnover, that reality. We're pretty fortunate, the staff that we have contracted are wanting to stay in the community, so we are not looking at the huge turnover that we have experienced with contracted personnel this next year. But yes, we do, that is a preference, because we do invest a lot of time and energy getting them acculturated into our community, learning our ways, and so it's a benefit not having to spend that over and over.
Any idea of what percentage of our staff is solely focused on supporting the children in all the different schools? I mean, I know a couple of them, but I don't know how big that is in our, in our district. Or do we not have specialty staff beyond the occupational therapists and the speech therapists?
We have special education teachers, we have special education support staff that are dedicated, but again, you'll see them in, throughout the school based on the least restricted environment, their primary focus is there to support the students that have IEPs. You know, we have two teachers general at each of the elementaries except for two sites, so we do have those numbers. It's actually, when you look at the AFR, the ratios of how many students are within our special education student-teacher ratio, adult ratio, they are located there. I don't have the overall percentage when we talk about the total number of personnel.
I shouldn't have asked you for a percentage of it, not like that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I can get that for you. I mean, like, so we do have the ratios of, because it's part of our yearly reporting, how many staff, support staff, and teacher ratio to the students. And then we do have students with 504s, and while teachers take care of that accommodation, it can be quite timely for certain 504 students, and they have to be paying attention every day that those accommodations are provided.
I have one of each in my house, I understand.
Anything else on the Soliant contract?
You didn't have my...
My husband's in California, I could stay here as long as you like.
Where at?
Okay. On 6.5, this is our food program permanent service agreement, and this is actually one change on page 18, which is a change in the authorized signature. It does change us from Missy Wood to Mike Murray. And then item 6.6 is the summer food permanent service agreement, and it's the same, a technical change, it's on page 15, which is the signature.
So both of the certification pages should be corrected for the correct spelling of my first name.
Page 14.
Both of them.
And 16.
And then I had, I just had a couple of questions, and I saw Ann come in, even though I can't see her, oh, there she is. Welcome back, can't wait to hear about your trip. And I had a question, just because it's food service, what is our process for food that is not used, that kids don't eat? And how much are we throwing away? I don't know if that's poundage or...
Well, I don't have poundage, thank you. Up until three weeks ago, the state allows us to have a shared table for any whole fruits, any wrapped crackers, cartons of milk, items like that that can't be contaminated. When a child goes through the line, then they can put that particular item into the share bowl, because they must take it according to regulations for us to be reimbursed. Well, we have a new health inspector who's had been in Kingman, who is here now, and she wrote us up for the share table, that she does not allow. she wrote us up for the share table, that she does not allow it. So I'm in the process of putting together some information to see what I can do with her to try to allow the share tables, because the state lets us do it, and short, I mean, short of each child putting a fruit in there and then having to go in and re-sanitize it when kids are constantly sharing things, you know, but, so we'll be working on that and see what she says.
Okay.
But other than that, I know we throw out some fruits and vegetables, because kids, you know, don't eat them. They are allowed to take them out of the cafeteria. We try to reuse what we can, and we try to keep things to a minimum. We don't prepare more than is needed, and that sort of thing.
I'm sure you're trying to do everything as close to the best as you can.
Believe me, I want, I want the child to eat it.
No, I know you do, and I, I think that, I think that addressing the board of supervisors in terms of the share table is a good idea, because they're the ones that are in control, the health inspectors, and anybody that's hungry, that wants a banana that another kid touched, should have a banana that another kid touched. I mean, this is just common sense, so. But I was just curious how much we're throwing out in food. And then my other question is, what do we do for the kids that are hungry that have no money?
Well, it depends, if they have no money, and then they're on free and reduced, then it's paid for. When a reduced student has no money, we give them their meal anyway. We give any kid their meal. After a couple times when they don't, don't have money, we reach out to the family as much as we can. I do everything I can to try to get a child on the program, figure out what the problem is. We do have an alternate meal, which meets all the regulations, because our district has voted in, no meal charges to, so we don't have all that bad debt at the end of the year. And from how I see it, we really don't have a lot of, a problem with it.
Okay.
You know, a little more at the high school, because when you, when they have no money, first off, we will give them a meal. There's just no à la carte, or any, they can't have any à la carte items, because we want them to have lunch, not, you know, flavored water and cookies and chips.
Okay.
But as I say, I reach out to the family.
If they have to eat real good food, that'll straighten them out. And then they'll bring money, and then they can have the chips.
Well, if they're like, you have real good food, and ours are a little different.
You can eat this, and it'll straighten them out.
6.7 is the recommended changes to the policies in relation to our fringe benefits. This is the GCBD professional staff fringe benefits, GCQ retirement professional staff, GBBD support staff fringe benefits, and GDQC is retired support staff. And on each of these four policies, we are removing the statement about the 10% penalty for nonparticipation in the wellness program. We are asking that the board suspend its own policy, which is the BGB that relates to you have to have a first and a second reading for all policies, and that you adopt this change at the first reading. So, so that our policy reflects the contracts that we issued. 6.8. Questions?
All right. So this is, this is what they do for the EBT right now. Is it, is, what effect is that going to have, I mean, on this program?
That's, I think right now, that's yet to be known. We're just going to need to communicate the fact that, and I think most staff are aware that it's our money that we're putting into this EBT and for our benefits. So wellness is definitely an important part of, of keeping medical costs down. We know, we know things occur, accidents occur, the illness happens, and you can be the healthiest person on the earth, but, but we also know that, that someone's, the way someone's treating their body and how they're taking care of their body does have an effect on, on the overall general welfare or the medical needs that they might have over the course of the year. So that, that's a concern, because that's, that incentive is no longer there, and I say incentive by not financial incentive, but incentive to actually go and, and make sure that you're getting checked out at least annually, and know where you're, where you are medically, by having some data in front of you to know whether your cholesterol is high, or you have, you're prediabetic, or, I mean, there's just a lot of things that, if people don't go to the doctor annually and get checked, they have no, no baseline as to gauge how, how well they're doing health-wise. The, doing this at least gave them a few data points to look at and to consider over the course of the year. So the long-term effects, that's, that's yet to be known at this point.
How many, what percentage of the employees participate in this program?
You know, I, I can get that for you by next, by next meeting. I know that there's not a whole lot who are actually paying the 10%, but there are quite a few who are. Some of which have just completely opted out of the program and didn't want to participate at all, and others who may not have, may have missed either the pre or the post-assessment, and therefore they were disqualified and, and had to pay back that 10%.
Could, you know, could this, you know, if you, if you go to this, could this eliminate, this is a program that we've got here?
Say that again.
If you implement this recommendation, like you say, you're in sort of uncharted waters, could this eliminate the employment benefit trust? Is that a possibility?
No.
No, I don't think this, this act in and of itself would eliminate it. No, it would just, it would create some unknowns as to whether or not the overall health of our employees is impacted by them actually having to go in at least annually to have some of these medical tests done, so they can at least improve their health, or strive to improve their health, or maintain.
But I guess what I'm asking is if the significant number, just like you mentioned, there are some people that don't do this, if a significant number decide, I'm not, we're not going to participate, could that, could the consequences be that, one, the, the program fails, and then down the line, medical costs go up? Because, let's face it, if all of a sudden you, you say, hey, we're going to do this, and I'm going to the emergency room and all that, I, I remember years ago, when they offered, the insurance offered laser surgery. You remember that? And everyone jumped at that opportunity, fully covered, and it lasted one year. And so all of a sudden, I'm not saying, you know, I mean, I'm not saying that, that thing doesn't happen, but I know that it happened in this case. So all of a sudden, it was overused, and the insurance said, no, after that. So you want it done, it's going to cost you whatever. So what I'm saying is, if, if enough people said, no, I'm just going to handle this, I'm going to do it this way, could it, could it eliminate those cost savings, which I guess, over the years, since I'm new on the EBT board, was implemented to try to keep costs down? And, I mean, there's a little bit of history, and I've seen what can happen. Sounds good, everyone jumps at it, and then all of a sudden, it's no longer available.
Well, and, and I look at this, Pat, and, and I see several things. The first thing is, is that we pay as a district for the employee's health insurance. And if we penalize an employee 10% for not going to get their base numbers done against their health insurance, we're around $8,000 an employee is what we pay as a district. You're talking about going to an employee and saying $800. It's the first, the first thing. Second thing is, wellness program participation, if I remember my numbers from the employee benefit trust meeting correctly, is around 30% nationally. So if you go into a wellness program, if you have a wellness program, about 30% of your staff traditionally participate. Our numbers are up above 80%, because we have penalized our employees and taken money or done a punitive thing to force them into a program. I don't know that there's a benefit to our staff for doing that. I, I, I kind of look at this, and I say, if you're interested in your health, you're interested in your health. If you're not interested in your health, I can force you to go, and I'll use cholesterol as a, as a, as a for instance. Let's say your cholesterol number is 300, and you're going to be rewarded for bringing it down and getting on the medication. Well, if you play the game the right way, you can get on the medication 30 days prior, and you can bring the number down, and you can get off the medication, and that number goes back up, which you made your goal, the same way with weight loss or, or anything else that we target through a wellness program. If we're going to penalize people, we're not creating lifestyle change in, in the basket jewelry of them. We're, we're going to lose about 50% of those, because those are the ones that we forced into this. So if we're not creating lifestyle change, is there a real value to that program? And I think, I think that, you know, I think there's a value to 30% that nationally go to it, but I think when you push it up that extra 50% to get it to 8, I think, I think you're forcing people not into lifestyle change, but they're gaining assistance so they don't have to pay their own value.
See, there's a little difference here, John. If I'm, if I'm paying people, if I'm covering them, if I'm giving them a certain amount of money or insurance, if I'm giving it to them, then, then I can sort of direct how I want this done. It's not, I'm giving it to them. And so, you know, you can put conditions on something like that. You know, I don't know if they look upon that as a negative or whatever, but, you know, I guess the idea was, hey, if we can get a large number in here, we can save the district. If all of a sudden, this doesn't work out, like you say, then the district is going to end up having another situation that's a little bit different, and it'll be back here, and we're going to try to, we're going to be expected to solve it. So all I'm saying is, good intentions sometimes can lead you down the wrong path.
Can I ask a question?
You just did.
Thank you. How many employees are we talking about that are, don't want to participate in this program?
We don't, I don't have an answer to that. I have a, I have 540 total participants during, from 7/11 16 to 12/31 16. I have three years' worth of biometric information on those people, and there's been little to no movement. But I think what I'm concerned about is, you know, in reading through the trust minutes, the trust was, or, the, reading through the trust minutes, the Wellness Center was created for wellness. There was never a required participation. That, that came long after its creation. It was promised to save the district between $700,000 and 1.2 million. And unfortunately, we've never been able to calculate whether or not the center is an actual, is, if it's helping us. And then we implemented a penalty. It's all throughout the meeting, and I know Hal thinks it's a discount, but it's a penalty. And, and then we're told that the center is successful, and it's saving us money, because we have 540 people that go. Well, that's, that doesn't prove anything. I think for the long term of, of the trust, the stability of the trust itself, to be able to self-fund, it's important to be able to make those determinations, and I think after a year of no penalty, we're going to see how successful and how much it's utilized. It's not being taken away from anybody, but we have to be able to start somewhere and determine whether or not it is successful. I wish I could go. I wish I could go to the Health Center and wait three minutes.
I'm concerned, and I see what that is, though. Like, my husband, I, he probably won't go. But when I say to him, Dave, we'll have a 10% penalty, he'll be like, sign me up, you know, so he will go. Could you just change maybe the wording in there, that the district, instead of will charge you, the district may charge you 10%? Could it just be a matter of wording, just for a dear to see?
It's a done deal. We're not charging. There's no penalty. We already approved the contracts in our compensation packages. Is that, am I wrong? So...
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
Did we approve that before this came here to the board?
It was in the compensation package.
Were you changed?
It was just removed from the contract, the compensation package. So.
I have a question. Am I correct, Mike, that the higher the percentage of employees participating in the Wellness Center, the, the better negotiated rate we can get? Is that, that's what I picked up from an EBT meeting, that the more who participate, the better the rate?
I think that's what Pat's been asking.
Based on the contract, though, that would not be the case.
That's not the way it is. Okay. And the other thing is, I'd like to find a way to drill down on your information more. I've, I've heard two different reasons why employees don't participate. One is that some people, they, it's a privacy concern. They think that their health information is available at the district. As I understand, it's taken care of by some out-of-state company. The district, nobody in the district ever sees that. Am I, am I correct about the state of their health, and what the district is paying for an individual person, or do you know for their medical benefits? Do you know whether we can look, look that up?
Knowing the district would be...
We don't have access to that, although there are some reports that are provided where information is redacted.
But not, oh, okay.
And in, in some of those cases, you could possibly infer.
You can infer, but I think people, employees need to know, it's not, years ago, that information was available, but they wouldn't ask. It's nice to know. The other thing that I heard was, as, as people reach the age of retirement, you know, our medical doctors now are saying, I'm not taking any more Medicare patients. And so as you get closer to your retirement, you, your primary care physician who you've been using, and you drop him, he's not going to pick you up 10 years later. And I can see that that is, that would be a concern, that you want to keep your primary care physician.
Well, and, and just, just from a point of reference, I mean, I, I live in the private insurance. I get one visit a year at my primary care physician for free. I can have all my wellness stuff done for free. And what we've done as well with the Wellness Center is we've gained it to where that's where you go for the free. You know, and, and I look at, I look at something like the Wellness Center, and there are some very good things that come out of that Wellness Center. I mean, if you've got a teacher that you need to make sure is in classroom teaching, they don't have to go to urgent care, they don't have to wait for their primary care physician. You can get them in at the Wellness Center, you can get them in and out quickly back to classroom. There are some quick prescription things that can be done. So if you, if you have allergies, if you, if you need an Z-Pat, that type of thing.
Actually, they don't have allergy medication.
Well, but, sorry. But I'm, I'm just saying, there's a lot of quick in-and-out things that can happen there. And so I, I see an absolute benefit for our staff in having that. On the other side of it, you know, you run up a very good point in a, in a doctor, doctor-patient relationship, and, and I think making sure that those things don't get stepped on by the center is, is, is an important thing as well. So I, I, I look at, there are some great benefits, but I think there's some fine tuning that we should be looking at as well, and that happens soon to be key. What, what we're here to do is, we're here to look at this and say, goodness, let's, let's take a penalty from our employees and...
And one last thing I want to point out also, is that while we had a majority, I think it was 97% of our staff that went to their first and second appointment last year, we still have 50% of our staff and spouses that are not using the center as their primary care. They are going there to do what they have to do to not be penalized, but then they're using... using their primary care physician because that's where they feel comfortable. So I understand that the idea is to drive more people there, but I feel like, you know, we'll have a real good handle on everything by this time next year and...
You know, I see, I don't think that's uncommon because I've got the state insurance, you know, retirement, and if you go to certain physicians, you get it for less. If you decide to go to others, you pay more.
Right.
So, I mean, this whole idea that, hey, we're really heavy-handed on people, you run into that in the private insurance or in the, like the, if you're on a state insurance program because they contract with certain people and you can get stuff at a lower rate. And I decide I'll go to a dentist I've gone to, so I'm paying more.
Sure.
So this whole idea that this doesn't happen, that this is sort of unique to the Lake Hamsu Unified School District, that's not the case.
No, it's not the case, but I think that if you're going to say that you're offering benefits for free, then you're offering, that you're covering 100% of benefits, there is no only if. That's...
If I, if I may interject on a couple of things very quickly. Mr. Hades, to clarify, the, when we brought the contracts forward for approval in February, we brought them forward with that statement, may I remove from the contract? And so this was the follow-up policy revision so that her contract didn't conflict with our policy.
Okay, this, this seems to mean that this should have preceded that. Am I correct? It seems to me that if you have a policy, you change the policy before you go ahead and change the contract.
That should be, or logically, yes.
Exactly. That's what I'm discussing really here.
Okay.
So we, we changed the contract without having, so we did not follow policy, now the policy revision is coming forward. The second piece that I wanted to share and I, one of the things that, that we want to talk about is, we do really believe that wellness is important. There are a number of things that we would like to look at in terms of wellness policy in general as opposed to having a penalty. We did have some conversation this last fall with our attorney who was very uncomfortable with the fact that we were charging employees because of the free benefit issue. And so we did have advice from her that was probably not legal to have a penalty. If it was a discount and it was pre-advertised and set up a different way, but in fact, it's a penalty of what we pay. There are several districts that, for example, we require that employees have an annual physical. And if they have an annual physical, then they qualify for some, something in their, you know, I don't know, some reward within salary schedule and some things like that. There are ways to promote wellness without necessarily penalizing physically on their cost of insurance. So those are some areas that we still have a plan to look at. And just for Shannon's sake, I didn't, my husband still thinks we have to pay 10%. I'm not telling him. He won't believe it.
How long have we had this attorney?
This is our attorney that we've had for many years, Toscana.
We've had this for many years. That's another thing. I mean, if she's representing us and she's an attorney and all of a sudden she says, hey, this is an issue.
And in this case, she wasn't aware we have the policy. It had not been put by her before we brought it.
People are aggressive too.
I think too, Mr. Ernie, that not long ago, the Wellness Center actually followed the model of the True Wellness Center and that was incentive-based. And for an employee to participate in a wellness program, it should be incentivized and not penalized. And that was, that was the concern because not too long ago, employees were incentivized. They, they did receive an incentive to go to the Wellness Center and actually go through the program with having a pre and a post-assessment, medical assessment done. And as a result of meeting those goals that you set during the pre-assessment period, you were incentivized by getting a gift card of some sort. Obviously, things have changed over the years. It started out pretty good and pretty generous and then, and then it started to back down from there. But then what eventually happened is the incentives were then removed and then now it became a penalty or observed as a penalty. So that's, based on what Mrs. Asier just said, the wellness program then kind of did a 180 and did not, no, it no longer became an incentive program. It then was viewed and legalized as a, as a penalty type of a program in the situation. So that's why we're here trying to correct that. Now, I know that we've had discussions on the horizon that we'd like to go back to looking towards more of an incentive-based type of a program for employees. What that looks like is yet to be determined, but we want to get away from the penalty mindset and go back towards an incentive-based program.
And one last point of clarification I want to make too, just on the policy itself. Because I was a board member when this was instituted, although the regulations never came to the board, never came to me as a board member, they came to us as a board November 17th of 2015, but only as retirement professional and support staff as clarifying language. So this penalty was not transparently put in place. It was done retroactively or at least it was on those two retirement policies. And it wasn't brought to the board. It wasn't discussed with the board. The board didn't know about it. So just for a little clarification on that.
Since we're talking about the trust, item 6.8, at the last EBT board meeting, there was discussion about the revision of the original trust document. And the recommendation came forward that the district and the EBT have a joint look at the document. And so we did have a conversation with both the EBT and the district's attorneys and they suggested that we actually appoint a subcommittee, two members from the trust board, two members from the district board, as well as staff to get together and go through that document and make the suggested changes before it goes to the attorneys because that would save a little bit of money. And so what we would like to do is ask at the meeting that the board appoint two members to a subcommittee that we'd be meeting to review the trust document and make recommendations for changes. That's what 6.8 is.
Because that trust document is the statute, the law, the reg, it's everything to the future of the district and the trust.
And it was developed in 1986 and some things have changed since then.
Couple things.
Yeah. Item 6.9 is a change in two different regulations. The BGB is the Board Review of Regulation Policy. And that is simply a deletion of a unnecessary statement. The classification system is the classification system.
It is, what it is.
And then the next one is a relation with parent schools, which is a deletion of that policy and regulation or exhibit because that law has been recent. 6.10 is a revision of our JRR student surveys policy. And the actual policy that we revised was on your table this evening. The one that's printed in the document was missing a paragraph that we had added in our revisions earlier in the year. And basically what this does is, we had referred to that statute, this now lists all of the areas that are in the statute, right in the policy. And then it adds an additional paragraph about what the parents' rights are should they believe that we have violated our policy. And clarifies the Protection of People Rights Act as a reference. So those are the changes to this policy. But it still includes the paragraph that we added earlier in the year.
On the annual notification, technically the last paragraph in there, does the paragraph that was added actually conflict with that one?
With what we say that we're going to do?
Well, we, we say that we will not administer surveys except as allowed under ARS 15117, subsection D 1 through 7. Separate parental permission will be required on any survey under ARS 117, 15117, subsection D 5. And in the back, it references the entire ARS 15117 on an annual notification.
Yes. No, it doesn't conflict.
Okay.
Okay, when you actually print out the whole policy, there are each sections a little bit different and referenced there. I don't remember the detail of it, I would have to pull the section, but each of those sections refers to a different kind of survey.
Well, each section of what?
Of that ARS 15-117.
Right, but, but my point is...
Is that your question? I'm sorry.
My point is, is that, is that you reference, you reference certain sections in the added language, but then you turn around and at the, at the end of it, an annual notification referenced the entire statute. Shouldn't that, shouldn't that annual notification then, then have the opposite?
So you're saying add D 1 through 7?
Subsection. It should be subsection D 1 through 4 and 6 and 7 is, is the way that that should be added in my mind.
Yeah, because separate permission is required for the D 5?
Yeah.
Right, so, thank you. That helps me to remember.
And I have it right there.
That's good. The idea was that parents give permission at the beginning of the year for students to participate in surveys. And so that would mean any survey within that whole statute. So what we're saying is, yes, they may give permission, but if we administer something that addresses D 1 through 7, we will do an additional permission separate from that.
You mean D 5?
D 5 gets that.
Oh, yeah.
That we will do an additional separate permission.
Because we are not administering surveys. Wait a minute.
Except as allowed.
Okay, so, right, but I thought we will not... So it's my understanding we will...
Do you understand you?
I do. You can. It's my understanding when we adopted this last October that we will not put any surveys out that ask these questions, period.
That is correct.
Okay.
So D...
No, it's not.
No.
It's A.
So D 1 through 7...
That's mental health and...
Yes.
Things that we don't have control over.
We have except as allowed under D 1 through 7. So these are the ones that say this does not apply to. So we're saying we can, we'll go ahead and do the ones that this does not apply to, except on number 5, we will have a separate parent permission.
Right.
Because number 5 is the one that is question soliciting information pursuant to subsection A, which were the things we were not going to survey, as long as it doesn't require the student's name.
Right.
So those were excluded originally, so we're saying, no, we're going to include that as permission required. It's confusing.
It is.
I had to look at that again to remember it. Thank you. And that's the part of the problem, if you do even handbooks and things and you reference a policy, because then you have to go back and look at the policy to remember what it says.
Right. Titles are good though.
It's, it's an important one in our community to get absolutely right.
Yes, yes.
I wonder if we need a principal's handbook because there's so many kinds of policies like this and there's so much to know. And when you're an administrator on a day-to-day basis, you really need to know these things that need to be on your fingertips. So you have to tell, remind you to tell your staff at the beginning of the year, do not administer a survey without coming to me first, that we can follow district policy. Otherwise, it gets lost.
Exactly.
Maybe this is something that you do need to be very specific and not refer to all these, these policy numbers and statutes. Maybe it's something that has to be very specific and actually spell out, you can do this, you cannot do that, and that becomes your policy.
Well, I would say as a principal to my staff, don't do any survey without coming to me first. I wouldn't give any leeway because our job as administrators is to protect the district, protect the district financially against lawsuits. And I try to make, I would try to make it as simple as possible. Come to me, don't ever give a survey on your own.
Sure, but then...
It doesn't sound simple, but that's exactly what we did with this policy. We are not...
We don't have it in front of us, so I have no idea.
Wait a minute, I just want to say, we are not administering these policies that ARS says we, or surveys, that ARS is saying we can. We're saying we won't.
What, what we did is, is there's an actual list that was published with, with the update to the law. And it's things like critical appraisals of another person with whom the pupil has had a close, close relationship, gunner ammunition ownership, illegal, antisocial or self-increvency...
Okay, so you have those listed.
It's an actual list.
Awesome, that's what I knew.
It's an actual list in the policy.
I can't read that. She chans me a little phone like this.
We did simplify it even though it doesn't sound like it right now.
Okay, okay.
But that, that's why we're dotting that cross between the lines, we want to make sure that it's under strictly...
So the point, maybe, maybe we should list the one areas where they are allowed, but I'm not sure, right now, most of our principals are saying we're not doing any surveys without parent permission.
Well, well, the D 1 through 7, you know, we don't have a choice and that's why we can't. So for mental health screenings pursuant to and blah, 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 and a bunch of other laws, or private schools, we don't have any control over that, or nationally recognized college entrance exam, like ACT, you know, they're going to ask questions, but that's a college entrance. So it's, it's very specific. The only one that we would, would be number 5, and that's the one that we stated in our policy. We would get separate individual parent permission, written permission to do that. So I feel like we've covered everything. Just don't give any surveys.
Surveys are...
We really don't. We don't, except for the ones that we have to do along for most parts.
Yeah, what about us? Teachers don't want them either. We have surveys all the time, parents, then. We have to be in everyone.
All right. Item 6.11 is the first reading of GDC Support Staff Assignments and Transfers. And what this does is clarify transfers and reassignments and clarifies that the first priority is the needs of the district in terms of how staff are assigned.
I, I don't like the wording. I mean, I think that it is to read the needs of the district as determined by the superintendent, period, under subject. Now, if you want to put down as determined by the superintendent considering qualifications and employees' desires, but that's all you have to say. The rest of this is just to bolify somebody, I don't know.
And that's, that's already in the first big paragraph there, shall be assigned first in accordance with... We do not have to take the changes that CSBA, or excuse me, ASBA suggests. Sorry, just went right back to a past life for a second.
It's all the same.
We, we have the option not to add language if the board chooses not to. That's part of why it comes to the board.
The transfer...
I'm just saying, you know, when you read this, just, just listen, let me read it. Employee qualifications and the employees' expressed desires, when it is not possible to meet all three conditions, an employee shall be transferred or reassigned first in accordance with the need of the district, second, where the superintendent determines the employee is most qualified to serve, and third, the expressed preference of the employee. That's all covered if you simply say where the superintendent determines the qualifications, period.
And that, that statement is already in the paragraph above.
I know.
And really, we could just say assignments, transfers and reassignments and have that be one paragraph.
We could.
Certainly, we'd make it simpler.
I, I agree.
The reason I'm bringing this up, I'm just going to mention it, is when you put this in here, I will guarantee you, somebody's going to jump up and say, you didn't consider my expressed desires. Guaranteed, I'm guaranteed you're going to hear that.
Well, if we do this and simplify, then the heading is going to have to read assignments, transfers and reassignments. I mean, all three need to be in the heading. Because right now, the heading is simply assignments.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good one.
I think less is usually more.
We certainly can make that clearly decently, make it assured in one of our charter policies.
Right.
6.12 is the KHB advertising in schools. And this one is in response to our discussion around the high school kiosks. However, it doesn't specifically say kiosk. And the reason that I'm suggesting it come forward this way is because... forward this way is because we don't know what the future will hold in terms of advertising opportunities. And so the suggested language here as a beginning point for discussion is to take the criteria that we currently have for paid advertising and add a statement that reads advertisements that require students to enter personal information shall be denied. And that way, we have that paragraph. So if you look at the policy itself, we already don't allow for paid advertisements, things that are not age-appropriate, that can contain promotion of illegal substances, the big vices, and then that we have to comply with policy of abstinence, and then this as a statement about personal information.
I appreciate it, I really do, but I do have one question. This bothers me, because I watch districts and I watch organizations all the time develop funds to have funds so that funds are available when they need the funds. And it says, "A district shall establish an advertisement fund that is composed of revenues from the sale of advertising. The monies in the advertisement fund are not subject to reversion." I think it would be a lot easier to say advertising funds will be directed at this.
And that's the actual language of the statute, it's in relation to bus advertising, specifically. We don't do any school bus advertising, I think we tried it and it was not successful.
See, there's nothing here that says where these funds, where we're going to direct these funds. And over time, people will forget this fund exists, except for those people that administer it.
That are watching it grow.
Is it possible, based on the statute, to target that?
To do it too.
Is it possible, based on the statute, to have that targeted?
Depending on target?
Ah, possible, given that that's really-
Well, we can make it whatever we want, it's our policy.
As long as we're not changing the law.
What was, there, something in the back of my head says there was a purpose to the revenue being generated by those kiosks.
I'm not sure if it goes to student government, I think it does. I think it probably goes to student government. So that's how a district fund, it goes to the student government.
Okay.
So this advertising would be if we were to do advertising on this, as we don't, as a district, have paid advertising.
Well, I appreciate the last sentence in the policy. Request for advertising to promote the merit of any product by brand name or trademark shall be submitted to the board, I like that.
And the board has discretion to decline.
Right.
Yeah, I think overall it's good.
And this was really, school sponsors, student government activities and so forth are exempt, but this is mostly things that schools would do for fundraisers.
Mike, what, does this fund already exist?
She just leaned over and asked, and so I'll check on that, I have a note to check on that.
And when you do, find out if, what it can be spent on?
We do have, there's a very small amount of money in an advertising budget, I recall seeing that, and I remember asking the question early on about, "Do we advertise?" And apparently, we did an experiment with bus advertising, and that was not successful.
And don't misunderstand me, I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong, I'm just saying, I've seen too many organizations had 10 or 15 funds, and pretty soon, people forget which fund it's for what, and who's spending what on it, and it can turn into quite a mess eventually.
Any suggested changes here? 6.13, this was in response to the requests made at the last board meeting to add an agenda item about the possibility of establishing board advisory committees or subcommittees. And so this particular item provides the opportunity for the board to have a discussion about if you would like to have subcommittees, what they might be, and who you might like to be on them. There is some information under the rationale about how subcommittees are used in other places, and if you don't mind, I'm going to go through that just briefly with you. These can be used to address upcoming issues or areas of focus, they can be used for a number of things that the board chooses. When you do have an established advisory committee or a subcommittee, terms interchangeable, this provides an open meeting that is posted, however, minimally, maximally has two board members, because otherwise, it becomes a board meeting. So for it to be a subcommittee, it can have no more than two board members, and then it also allows you to include district staff and community members to provide advisement on that committee. You can also select the composition of a subcommittee, or you can direct the staff to fill a subcommittee, or say, "I wanted to include these kinds of people," or however you choose to do so. Again, they are subject to open meeting law, and from my experience of watching boards, they can be, they're meeting a number of things. I've seen just general, general subcommittees, you know, we're going to look at all of our board policies before they come to the board, we have a subcommittee that reviews them and asks pertinent questions. They can be too specific to a topic, so for example, if we were going to look at our boundary changes, we would have a subcommittee to put together, look at all of the district boundaries, all of the information, then come back to the board with the recommendation after having gotten a lot of input. One of the areas we've talked about is the discipline, and how do we want to move forward on discipline, so it would be appropriate perhaps to have a discipline subcommittee, those are examples. They can also be really simple, there can be a standing subcommittee, which would be some, for example, looking at all the contracts before they come to the board for approval, so that you don't have to all worry about reading them all the time. They really can be almost anything that the board needs as a function. But one of the things to think about is ongoing versus one time. So it might be that you have an ongoing committee that looks at policies, or it could be that you have certain policies that you convene a one-time, very specialized, and then when that one's, the next important policy, it might be a different group of people that are brought together because of expertise. So those will be all areas to consider when you're looking at subcommittees.
What committees like that do we have now?
We do not have any board subcommittees.
Not any at all.
Right, right now, we have district subcommittees, and with the district subcommittees, the main difference is that they, although we may invite board members to be a part of them, they're typically focused on the district staff, not necessarily outside, community members, and they typically focus on an area that the district is responsible for implementing before we bring a recommendation to the board. So one of the good examples is the budget committee. We have a lot of responsibility in proposing a budget that is sound, and so we do a lot of work on a budget subcommittee, but it's not a board subcommittee, because then we would have open meeting, we would have, you know, much more of a different process.
One we might have immediate need for, I know the board has been working on revising the mission statement, which everything needs to be revised occasionally, I have no problem with that, but I do know this about mission statements, that mission statements, it's advised that it's everyone participates in the mission statement. I'm not saying that we have to start over, I mean, I was on part of that years ago, it was agonizing, it just went on forever, I don't ever want, I don't want to do that again, but where it's imminent now, that the board is trying to revise something and come up with the final draft, but it should be just a draft, it shouldn't be the board's mission statement, in my opinion.
But that's part of our job, is to provide the vision.
Well, the vision, perhaps, when you write the mission statement, the staff at all levels should have input into it. I was very much a part of this.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not discounting what you did, I'm just-
I'm telling you about the mission, no, I was very much a part of learning what a mission statement is, to be valid for every, because the point is that everyone needs to buy into it. Everyone feels that he is a stakeholder, whether it's employees at all levels, parents, people in the community, and we did it that way before, and some of these people sitting out here are involved, and I'm sure they don't want to start from the beginning, start from scratch, either.
Well, you just made, you just made it clear that we're going to start from the beginning.
No, I qualified, I said that's the last thing I want to do.
But how else will we do it now? Now, we have to involve everybody in the process from the get-go.
Well, let's don't, but I'll tell you, there's going to be no point in having it, because it will be five members, and that's what we say, it's just, it'll be worthless, there will not be a staff buy-in. It's a price you pay if you want buy-in.
Well, I understand, but I don't understand why we're arguing about this right now, when, you know, we were starting our strategic planning meetings, this seems to be something that we would talk about there, and maybe we send out a staff survey, maybe we send out a survey that just says, "What is important to you in a mission statement?" I mean, it doesn't have to be this painful thing that it was last time, but that's just my thought.
Actually, one of the things that I recall our discussion including was a reciprocal process, not having it just be the board's statement, and so I think the problem is we haven't gotten back together to determine what that would look like.
Right.
I have a problem with 6.13, not the agenda action item itself, I think it's fine, we can pass it. What I have a problem with is the philosophy behind it, and I think we all need to keep in mind, that a subcommittee should only be used when absolutely necessary. A camel is a horse made by a committee, and the only committee that's effective is a three-man committee where two people are out on vacation. We need to be extremely careful we don't start using subcommittees so that nobody's found in fault, and that's a very bad habit we can fall into. There will be things we need a subcommittee for, specifically pointed issues, but this shouldn't become a habit.
And that's up to the board to decide how you want to do that, or if you want to do it at all, that's-
I think, I think from where, from where my understanding is, is that this is going to be much more targeted.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but we have to remember that, because committees are a great way to have plausible deniability, you know, "I didn't have anything to do with that, you can't find me guilty, I decided it." And we have to be careful we don't get ourselves trapped into that routine. Now, this is our first year, we're not doing that, but by the fourth year, we may be tired and decide, gee whiz, I don't want a jail response.
Well, the function of a committee in a school district is that you have a representative from every school, and that person is responsible for communicating things and back and forth from the staff, and hopefully, you will have a classified person who can commit from every school as well, administrators, I'll be part of it, and that's representative, it gives good information, so when I think of a committee in a school district, it's not necessarily a camel, it doesn't look like a camel, it might look more like a squid or hippopotamus, I don't know what it might actually be, but it's not a camel.
Like I said, I don't have a problem with forming subcommittees, please don't misunderstand, I have no problem with that if they're pointed, like John said.
Well, I don't like committees.
What I have a problem with is when it becomes easier to form committees than to just simply solve the problem.
Well, and the committee would only be to bring a recommendation to the board, which the board would then have to approve, so at some point, all five of you would vote on whatever it is.
Right.
This is not, you know, committees for things that are not under the board's purview, I don't mean to sound insulting, but they're, it's about the things that are policy that you need to recommend and want to have some input on before you make a decision.
I mean, if I may, I mean, the bottom line in any board with a subcommittee is, they're the ones that are out doing the footwork, so you guys aren't wasting your time. They're going to go out, do the work, present your case, so you can both be done and get on with life, that's the end of it.
I understand the theory.
I mean, you know, they're-
My thought in even suggesting committees was that there really is no avenue for people to participate from the community, other than doing a call to public, because we've had no committees. My thought is that, I know a lot of people that want to participate, but there's no way to do that.
I don't have a problem with it.
No, I'm just explaining why I thought it would be good to have some. All the committees that do take place are private, and so they are within the district, they're not public committees, it would be nice to have some people in some key committees that are doing some of the work, and the research, and making recommendations, and whatnot. And I've certainly got a list of committees that I would like to see, so-
Want to share some of it?
Sure, policy committee, curriculum committee, health and wellness committee, since we have a student health and wellness policy, did anybody know that?
No.
Oh, I didn't know that until today. A technology committee, a finance committee, and a student safety committee. I'm not going to say a word. I'm not saying we have to have them all, those are my thoughts, and I have very specific reasons for all of them, because I have people that are interested in all those things that have no avenue to give input to the district or to the board.
I'm glad that you do have people, that's a good thing. Do you have a process by which we would get community members, would it just be you as the board president appointing people who you know want to be on it, or would there be a process where we would let the public know that this is available and they could apply for it?
Absolutely, there would, there would be a process, there would be a policy for committees, I would assume.
Well, and that's going to be part of the discussion next week, is what do you really want to see, what kind of parameters, so.
Right.
Can I ask you a question, though? It seems to me that the board, even the, it just seems to me that we've hired the superintendent, and as things come along, and the need is there, that the superintendent will identify those things, and would, you know, set up a committee process, I mean, not be real, you know, make it broad-based or whatever, but I just have a problem with all of a sudden, the board, it almost seems to me that now, especially if you put this in, I don't like to make an organization real cumbersome, and I don't mind committees, as there's a need for them, and you see that you need to go in that direction, but it just seems to me like the superintendent is the person that ought to be doing that, and that once those things come up, that those things will be referred to the board, and then the board will either approve or whatever. But, you know, I'm not here to micromanage the district, and all of a sudden, go ahead and say, "We're going to set up boards."
Well, I think that the statute is set up that way, and I think if anybody really looks at what our responsibilities are, I don't know how else, you know, you and Kathy are in an advantage, because you came through this district as administrators, so you have an insight that the community doesn't have, that I certainly don't have, and that's-
But you can involve the community, and I think-
How? How do I do that?
I think in the past, the schools and the administrators have been very good in involving community members in a variety of things, or even in committees, where you want, you come up with those ideas. To me, the idea of a committee is, you bring in additional people with other ideas, and so as they put these things together, and it begins to gel, then you come up with something solid. It seems to me that the superintendent ought to be the person that runs that, not me, or not you as a board member.
And in response to that, certainly, the board can direct certain district committees that include certain participants, that's a possibility as well, and there may be areas, however, that directly affect policy that the board will adopt, and we might have a different, you know, perspective on how that should be handled, so I don't know that the board has done that in the past, I can't speak to that.
But you know, all of a sudden, when we're going to set up a curriculum committee, and it's difficult as it is with professionals coming up with all this, and then all of a sudden, you have the yeoman, or the, you know, layman saying, "Well, we want, you know, this curriculum committee." It seems to me that the professionals, because of their background, have more of a clear understanding of where that ought to go, and then all of a sudden, down the line, when it is all put together, and you involve these groups, that it comes to the board and that they approve these things.
One of the things that I remember, we did have the kind of curriculum committees you're talking about, and we did involve the community, but once the state went to state standards, that we kind of, there was hardly any point, and Brad, you can step in here and say I'm wrong.
No, you're not.
Oh, thank you, Brad. I'm sorry to have to know what you're saying. But that, it just kind of, that step got dropped, it was hardly worth our time, because the state was dictating what our standards were.
But not the curriculum?
Well, as Brad, you're- Well, ask Brad to reply to that. Curriculum really is...
Well, it's driven by the standards, but we have control over how we present the information and how it's taught.
And then we also have control over resource material as well, that we use inside the classroom.
Brad, yes.
And there's a lot of people in the community that have ideas on, you know, resources, or products, or textbooks, or whatever, that we can use to meet those standards.
And I didn't mean to stir up a hornet's nest.
Well, yeah, you did.
You know, all I'm saying, all I'm saying is that, like John said, these should be pointed. There are things that we could assign a committee to. Just to give you an example, Diana already has all the information sitting on her desk. She could make a decision. And if we start appointing committees when she has the information, or Mike has the information, then all we're doing is we're really putting up substitutes front, so that they don't get blamed for anything. I mean, you've got to make sure your committee is pointed for a specific objective. If you don't, you're going to wind up with committees simply putting out wayward.
You're, you're correct. But then again, you know, here we are, here we sit as the governing board of the school district. As the governing board of the school district, we want our staff involved. We want to know that we've got good quality people, which I think that we do, at the staff level, having input. But let's not forget, people who pay the bills are the community.
Are constituents.
And if we don't involve our community as a part of this, you know, we just got kind of talking about handbooks. If we don't have our community come in as part of this, I'm not saying let them write the handbook, but if they don't understand what's in it, or what we're expecting of our children, or what our curriculum looks like, or what these things actually and truly mean, or where our hands get tied to meet a standard, and what we have to put into curriculum to get there, they don't know that. We're the ones who get nailed to the cross. And so if, if, if we involve the community, you know, what's the worst thing that happens with this process? That we make some friends along the way, and then the next bond override gets a little bit easier to put out? I just, I just see, you know, if you invest a little bit of time, a little bit of effort, you might make a few friends along the way and get your district to where, to where you want it to be. Does it need to be pointed?
Yeah, it does.
See, I agree with everybody you're saying. This is a continuum. You've got two ends of the continuum.
Right.
The thing I'm saying is, is there anybody in this room that can tell me they've never sat on a committee that was wasting their time? Gee, I don't see anybody volunteering here.
Well, that's the responsibility of whoever's heading that committee.
I know, but I'm simply saying...
You don't need to meet. You call them and say, "We're not meeting this morning."
But I'm simply saying, there's a continuum of perfectly pointed committee assignments and stuff that we're wasting people's time with.
But that, again, is the responsibility of whoever's heading it, and with the direction of the superintendent. Those people are going to work together and then make that decision. If there's nothing on the agenda, so be it. We're going on. Don't waste our time. We'll meet in three months. But I, I think there's a need, because I, I do believe that many of you who ran for the school board, that was part of your platform. Your platform was to go out to the community and be transparent. This is just one way to do that, is to get them involved, get the community involved, and just give them a chance. They might not even show up. Point here. They might not even show up, but you've given them that chance, and for those that want to be, this is, like you say, this is your time to start building those bridges, because we've cut down so many bridges along the way, and it's time to rebuild, and this might be one way. We used to have committees. We had committees, yes, we were committed to death. We were in those times, because that was the way we solved our problems. But there were some, to be honest with you, there were many that were very beneficial, and they were taken away. They were wiped out. And, and the reason that was given to us when we questioned that was, they're no longer needed. We'll make all the decisions. Well, you know, that put up walls, right there. It put up walls between the employees and the district, between the community and the district. Hold on, I need to be able to get my input, and those were taken away from us. So I applaud you for having this conversation, and, and, you know, getting back to that, and maybe forming some. And you don't have to have a lot. It might be just three, and just, just coming together and giving people that opportunity again that we once had.
And just having the opportunity, even if no one shows up. You had the chance, just like two calls.
To show up, look.
And I think certainly, a point was made there. There's no suggestion that we should have committees for the sake of having committees. They have to have a purpose. They need to be relevant.
Right.
They need to be necessary.
And just to clarify, Diana can start any committee she wants without coming through the board or to the board. She can say, "We need a committee," and she decides who goes on it, whether it's the community, or board members, or whatever. And in the meantime, the board can proceed down this path too, as well.
Sure. She's not relying on the board committees for anything she would be doing. This is for, just like Joanne said, you hit the nail on the head. It's really involving the community and giving the people who have been wanting to help a way to do that, to participate.
With Pat's point, the board is, is not trying to micromanage.
No.
That was a good point, and I think we need to clarify that.
No, I don't. I don't think we are.
Looking to see if this is the last item. Six, that fourteen is the bachelors. And so we have the bachelors for March of 2017, and then the student activity funds, K-8, 912 for February, and the auxiliary funds for February.
I don't have any data in front of me for this meeting.
I, you know, the only, the only comment that I had, and I, and I've got some questions, but I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you become prepared, is, is I see that we had one check that was left uncashed in the K-8 student activity funds. And you know what that tells me? That we're doing a good job in the business department, and we're actually reconciling our checkbook.
And, and we know who that person is.
Exactly. We know exactly where that money is.
And we were... I was told today that that check has been taken care of.
Even better.
And our information items, we do have a couple of information reports this month. The educational services and the special services have provided some data. If you had any questions you wanted to ask, or more information for the board you need.
I have one thing on the informational report. It says here on the NT3 grant, "Will be updated in August." I'd like to see both of our grants updated in June, and I'd like to know who's participating in the grant, who's being trained in the grants, and what our plan is for the fall. And I'll probably ask for the same report next fall. I think that we're talking a lot of money coming in from the federal government and the state, and we need to track it on a pretty regular basis and know what we're accomplishing, not just who went to some training, what we're actually accomplishing that transfers to the classroom.
Well, I will tell you with Kristy Olson and Michelle Yusso in charge of that grant, basically, under Brad, that it will happen, because that's what they're doing.
Fine, then all they have to do is listen.
Okay. I think I only have one question today, and it's for Aggie under special services. We had some professional development, fifty-two staff members for racial discrimination. What was that?
The U.S. Department of Education offered some updated information on looking at identifying students for special education, and where racial discrimination can come in, based on some of the biases for that process. So it was just some guidance, and sharing that information for staff to be mindful of. And so we made sure that information was communicated to staff, since it came through the guidance.
So it was a U.S. DE guidance?
I'd like to see that, if that's okay.
And I would like to thank Aggie for being on top of that kind of thing and following through. When you see an opportunity like that, it doesn't ever hurt.
It's only seven.
Good job.
All right, anything else, any questions, any other information you'd like us to have next week?
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some, second.
Matt, any?
Yes.
Matt, Matthew?
Yes.
Adam, huh?
Yes.
Stella Moore?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.